I'd like to call the meeting back into order. Do I have a motion? Oh, no, I guess I need to welcome everybody.
I moved. We come out of executive session.
Yeah, do I have a motion to come out of executive session?
Moved.
Second.
A motion by Tom and a second by Wes, all in favor. Unanimous. Do I have a motion to approve personnel? A, 1 through 65, B, 1 through 22, and C, 1 through 65?
Second.
Motion by Mike, second by Tom, all in favor. Unanimous. Okay. Now, I'd like to welcome everybody to our meeting. We are so happy that you're here. If we could all stand, we'll have the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we have several presentations today. First, we have Sarah Taylor with the Spark Program.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So, we are very excited to share with you more about the Spark Grant Program this afternoon. Let me go ahead and introduce what I call the Spark Team. We have Lindsay Simpson from our student support facilitator. We have Esmeralda Guerrero, a Spark teacher, and then Carmen Lynn as our educational technology coach. And each of them will come up and share with you. But I'm going to go ahead and get started. And just kind of remind you, back in the fall of 2022, we were contacted by former Representative Carolyn DeBose, sorry, her office, and they were looking for some initiative, some innovative educational programs to support through some of startup grant funds. So, several of us in the district office, and this include members like Mike Evans, Amy Chang, Leanne, Jennifer, we all got together and kind of quickly, like within two weeks or less, I believe, put together an idea for the grant project. So, then in September of 2022, we were awarded $700,000 grant to begin the Spark Program. With the project, we wanted to provide a safe and reliable wraparound family services to support children from birth to five, which we had not done previously. So, first, in January of 2023, Carmen joined our team, and she helped start up the project. She worked on all the required registration forms, our website platform, also gathered additional resources for families, and then started some parent trainings all in that year. And then in August of 2023, Esmeralda joined our team, and she became our first Spark teacher to work with our families that had kids from birth to five years old. And then the other thing we did was to address the transportation barriers. We purchased two buses. I think we ordered them like 18 months ago, still haven't seen them. But they're hopefully going to be here in the next two months. One of them is a regular-sized bus, but then we also ordered a smaller one that doesn't require a CDL license to drive. So, that might be my retirement plan. So, but we did do a lot of research in what types of programs would be successful. We actually visited Gwinnett County, and they have a play alarm program in all of their elementary schools to work with, again, students birthed age five. So, we went to two of their different sites. They were very gracious and shared a huge amount of information with us, how they ran that program. We also, this Friday, the four of us are going to Corralwood School in DeKalb County to learn about their preschool program too, and the types of family supports that they have. So, I have a video to share with you, so you can kind of see, a quick video to see sort of what it looks like.
Spark is a free federally funded program that Forsyth County Schools started this year. It's for parents and guardians to come with their child or children ages birth to five. During these sessions, they get to spend time in a preschool setup classroom with a certified educator like myself. And then we get to work on gross motor skills, fine motor skills, social-emotional learning things. We get to make some crafts, we get to read together, explore different types of sensory activities, and as well as imaginative play with friends and other adults in the classroom. I get to get one-on-one interaction with the child and also in the guidance of the teacher. The resources what I get is very helpful for the child, prepare them for the real environment, for the real school. It's just not only about the creativity, but also there's so many things like language and other things this program focuses on. So, it's purely very helpful for the kids. And I see my child very happy and very, very interested to come every time and very excited. So, I think it's very rewarding.
Spark for Parents is set up to support parents in helping their children navigate different apps or basic computer skills, as well as some different milestone activities, learning platforms that are accessible and available to them through the school system and to get them ready for kindergarten. When families come in, the biggest component we see is their social interaction with each other. Their sharing more, their, their week time. They're able to have that time where they are sitting and engaged in activity. For, let's say they came in and they can only sit at an activity for a minute, but as they continue and they get into the routine, they and their parent understand some of the, oh, let's try to see if we can sit here for a little bit longer, or let's try to color. And so then they're, they're engaging with their child and building that bond and relationship with them. And that's such an important skill, having that at an early age is really neat.
I do recommend all of the parents to take this opportunity. It's really helpful not only performing in the class, but also when you go back to your home and improve their language and creativity and sensorial skills.
Just two weeks ago, we had a really rough Monday, and so I walked over to one of the Sparks classes for about 20 minutes. Just, and I walked out, I was like, okay, now I feel better. So, it does. Ask Lindsay to share some additional data with you.
Thank you, Sarah, and good evening. So, as you guys all saw, it's such a joy to see those little smiling faces in our Spark Program. And it's even more of a joy to see our young children who are learning through play that we have here in our classrooms. When we began Spark last September, we began recruiting families through social media, our school newsletters, and mainly word of mouth. That's how folks heard about our program, and they were able to enroll. I'm happy to share with you guys that at this time, we only have a few spaces that are available for families for our Spark Program here in Forsyth County. Currently, Spark is serving 121 families, which equates to 150 students, birth to five, that we're serving here in Forsyth County Schools at two of our sites. So, we have one site at Brandywine Elementary School, and then our second site is over at ACE, the Academies of Creative Education. Currently, our Spark Team offers 12 sessions per week, and they are 90 minutes in length. And we have a maximum size of 15 students per session. In those sessions, the parent stays with the child. So, we're looking at 15 students. We're looking at 30 bodies that we have within our classrooms for a typical session. As Sarah mentioned, we are so excited to overcome transportation barriers for our students. Working collaboratively with our transportation department, we are able to offer transportation to 24 students that we have enrolled within our Spark Program. And as Sarah mentioned, we have two additional buses ordered. So, we're excited to be able to offer more than 24 spots once those buses arrive and join our fleet.
So, do their parents ride with them on the bus?
They do. We have a designated parent that can ride that bus, and the driver actually checks to make sure that's who is with that student before they board the bus. So, as you guys saw in the video, we do have a parent component with our Spark Program, because we know that it's absolutely important that our families know how to access resources. So, we have some online resources. And we've also offered 22 in-person parent sessions so far this year to our families here in Forsyth County Schools. And Carmen will share those topics with you guys in just a few moments. As we are preparing to gear up for next year and how can we expand our Spark Program, we currently already have 67 of our families who have said they plan to enroll next school year. So, that's almost half of our families who have said they plan to enroll. And then obviously, we have a few students who will be going on and joining kindergarten here within our schools. I'm going to turn it over to Esmeralda, who can share with you guys a little bit about what the classroom looks like each day.
Good afternoon. We do also serve a very diverse community, so it's important to build a strong rapport with our families regardless of language barriers. So, as a fluent Spanish speaker myself and ESOL endorsement holder, I'm able to translate for our families through a variety of different ways, using visuals in our daily lessons, modeling the activities, and even translating apps when needed. This allows our families to feel comfortable welcoming the classroom and allows them to feel comfortable talking to us and asking us any important questions they have. And then moving on to a glance at our day, you'll notice on this slide, the families are actively listening and connecting with their children through a read aloud in a safe learning environment. The rest of our activities focus on skills through the general, sorry, Georgia early learning development standards such as fine motor skills, social-emotional number sense, early writing skills, social skills, and most importantly, learning through play. But before we start off our, any of our activities, we practice mindfulness. So, through the program, we've, you know, we taught them that when we are regulated, we can think better, and if we can think better, we can learn better. And it's become a routine for them. If you walk into our classroom during any of those moments, you can see the children participating, breathing in and breathing out. It's, it's been a phenomenon to watch. And so, not only is it important for parents to build a connection with their children in the classroom, it's important for the parents to also feel equipped to be their child's first teacher. And I'll let Ms. Carmen take over and talk about Spark Reports.
So, not only are parents here for their weekly sessions with their child, they also come in for the parent training sessions and at-home resources that we have available for them to continue the learning and growing outside of the classroom. Some parent training sessions are based on supporting the family's school-age children, while others offer a variety of resources to help with the technology and community-based resources available to families. Some of the topics are listed here. In addition, in addition to the 22 training sessions that have been offered this school year, families have access to multiple at-home resources throughout the week when not in class on the web. Some of these resources are kindergarten preparatory activities, English and Spanish family engagement calendars with activities such as stringing beads onto a straw or playing Simon Says or doing a little hunt in the house for different shapes that are available to them. Monthly read-alouds are also posted online, as well as our teachable moments to reinforce the skills that are being taught in the classroom, such as math and language problem solving, mindful moments, and ideas to help your child or their child be able to express themselves in the world around them. With the weekly lessons, parent trainings, and at-home resources available, we want to make sure all of our families are thriving as they enter school. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to share the Spark Program with you. We would like to invite each of you to attend one of our Spark Sessions. Do you have any questions for the Spark Team?
I'm in. I love little kids.
Well, I love, so I would totally have taken advantage of this. I used to take my kids to the library, but, you know, it's just kind of sporadic in the programming when they have it. But it was great, you know, to be able to be there and have the parents, and you could, you know, have that interaction in a kind of contained setting where there's, you know, someone teaching and leading. So, when, when y'all received the federal funds, the program, did you, you all came up with the program yourself? Or was this a federal, like they had certain guidelines? And how much autonomy, I guess, did you?
It was strictly, yeah, we came up with it all from the very beginning.
Love it.
The only parameters we have around it is we have to collect data.
Okay.
So, each of the families have done a pre-assessment, if you would, about their child's skills. And then in the end, they will do a post-assessment and see how they. But even just observing, just observing them, you can see how much they have learned over a quick period of time.
Yeah, well, and you know, there's such a push now with literacy and everything, you know, and everything I've heard since I've been on the board, speaking with you experts, is, you know, get the kids when they're young, right? And so, you're building that foundational space, which is excellent. I love everything about this.
That's what I was going to point out, Lindsay, is that, you know, even, and we have several former elementary principals in the audience. I know they would agree with this. Even in a very high-achieving affluent community like Forsyth County, we still have children come to school at age five who are lacking very basic literacy and numeracy skills. And what this does, it makes sure that we have a program out there, so hopefully more and more children will come to school ready to learn. Because when they come to Forsyth County and they're lacking those literacy and numeracy skills in this community, they are way behind, and they know it right off the bat. And the other thing I love about this is the parental training aspect, especially for, for parents who do not speak English as their first primary language. You know, school can be overwhelming, and, and all the resources, you know, how do I access them? And so, what this training does, it also makes sure our parents are prepared when their children start school. And it just puts us at such an advantage for these young learners who really need some additional support. And I could not be more proud of you guys. We are off to such a great start. I happened to visit a couple times, and I encourage you to do so. It truly is an amazing program, and it's because of the people.
How many times a week does a typical kid?
So, they, one time a week for 90 minutes. The family has to be with them, so they can't leave and take phone calls. By the fact that they tell them to put their phones away, because they're supposed to be engaging with their child. Some families bring, you know, one child, some have three. We have probably about five different languages as far as families that have different languages. And then, and we've had fathers, we've had grandparents, so we've had a variety. So, it's really nice.
How does this also feed into the pre-K programs? Is that going to be included? Because I know there's a lot of discussion about pre-K and hopefully ramping that up a little bit. We've talked about preparing for kindergarten in the past.
Absolutely. Well, we've got good connections. A lot of our families access the preschool programs in our community that they can pay for. And then we do have two Head Start programs here in Forsyth. And so, and then, of course, all of our special needs preschool programs. So, it definitely feeds, I mean, it's definitely meeting a need for maybe families who can't necessarily put their child in pre-K, but it gives them that educational opportunity so that the parents can become the teachers, and that's our goal, so.
Well, and I love too, just to add, you know, at the end, when you're talking about, you know, stringing the beads on the straws or just different activities. I think with today's age, just being so digital, you know, it's hard to know, okay, you know, like I've got a, I've had my kids go non-digital some days after school, and they're like, well, what do we do? And I'm like, uh, I'm like, I don't, and then I'm like, oh, we have a whole game closet. Or we have that, you know, and so you'd be able to show them, give them ideas that, you know, you don't have to default to a device.
Absolutely.
I love that.
One of the trainings that Carmen did was on technology and how long screen time should your child have?
Perfect.
We're trying to pair it up, again, with that educational piece for parents.
Yeah. Good job. This is great. All right, thank you, guys.
Yes.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you. Okay, next, we have Amy Bartlett with the Solar Eclipse Plan. I can't wait to hear this.
We just had an eclipse.
We looked it up. You can go to, you can go to Cleveland, Ohio, and it's total.
We're not paying for that.
So, you bring up a great point. Here we find ourselves in the middle of March, and most of our families and our teachers and students are looking forward to spring break. But what we might not be thinking of is the day after spring break, which is going to bring us the opportunity for another total solar eclipse. And lucky for us, we experienced this in Forsyth County and the nation back in 2017. So, I feel that we're really well-equipped with that experience to prepare for this. And just want to share with you, our board, our plans as a school system, and certainly relating back to your board goals, which is safety for students and staff, and of course, effective and efficient financial planning. So, that solar eclipse will happen again the Monday after spring break, which is April the 8th, and that maximum time is going to occur from 1:45 to 4:20 p.m. with the max view in Atlanta being at 3:04 p.m. So, I want to show you on our next slide, you'll see the trajectory there of the path of the eclipse. We're a little further away from the direct path than we were in 2017. We'll probably hit about 81% viewing here in Atlanta. But it still brings us a wonderful opportunity for our students to learn and to experience the solar eclipse. And just for your information, the next one will occur for another 20 years in 2044. So, we certainly want to take advantage of this opportunity with our students as a learning experience and plan for that. So, when we talk about efficient financial planning, we have certainly coordinated with all of our departments and planning ahead so that we could place a bulk order for our district. If you were here in 2017, you know solar eclipse classes that were highest safety ratings were quite a commodity. So, we did our due diligence and researching and planning ahead and combined all of our orders into one large order to save money. And those orders, I'm extremely excited to share, have already been drop shipped, and our schools should be receiving them as early as this week or next. So, those are coming for all levels, K through 12, our transportation department as well. Everybody here in our system will be equipped with that protective eyewear. So, we will be very well-planned for the eclipse when it comes, the day after spring break. And of course, our team in teaching and learning has been busy working. Our phenomenal content specialists have been putting together resources for our teachers. So, this is just a snippet of a website that's accessible by our teachers that they can delve into and access a lot of different instructional resources so that we can incorporate this into our teaching and learning on April the 8th. So, that is already available, will be pushed out to all of our schools so teachers can feel well-equipped. We want them to take advantage of this unique opportunity with our students to learn about the science of a total solar eclipse and experience it as well. And finally, of course, we'll have a thorough communication plan. We've certainly coordinated with our communications department. All of this information will be pushed out to our school and district websites, as well as we'll be advertising this important event in our District March e-newsletter, followed with, of course, a campus messenger to all of our parents and guardians. And I think it's really fun that we'll have our own FCS hashtag, which is hashtag FCS Eclipse on social media, because I'm sure our schools will be planning a lot of fun events and ways to celebrate this event. So, we just wanted to make sure that you were informed, knew of our plans, and answer any questions you might have.
So, two weeks ago, I was instructed at work that I needed to travel the week of the 8th. And so, I got the plane tickets, and they were three times the amount, and there were no window seats.
Oh, my gosh.
Now, I know why. Now, I know why. Monday, the 8th, I'm flying out at 3 o'clock in Atlanta.
That's why. That's exactly why. And there are special flights that you can book that follow the trajectory of the eclipse that are sold out, so you can't get on that flight.
No, no, but that's why the tickets were so much, I bet. Because I was like, that's three times as much. I was like, what's going on? Now, I know. So, this is awesome. Kids are going to love it, and they're going to talk about it for a long time.
They will. Great. Thank you so much.
Meetings.
Good evening.
BCBI.
Thank you. We noticed that we left something out that was not intentional. Whenever you rewrote the Board Public Participation Policy, your intent was that you wanted to be able to get feedback from the community prior to taking action. And so, this is just a teeny-weeny change that we're just going to place on the website for feedback for the next 30 days. It's for agenda action items, just to be very specific. So, we apologize that that was left off, and we know that was your intent. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have an update to policy, DIB Financial Reports with Larry Campbell.
Next time, could you sit further away? Out in the lobby?
Yeah, I'm there. All right. DJEAC?
DIB. You're also DJEAC.
So, this one here is a result of changes in GASB law. So, there's something called Sabita, which is basically software-based information technology arrangements. And we have to have a new capitalization policy on how to capitalize those types of assets or arrangements for audits. And the state of Georgia and UGA, which is a large school system in terms of what they do, theirs is usually $100,000. So, based on talking to the Malden Jenkins, they advised this $100,000 was about as low as they would accept. We wanted to keep the $1 million that we already had in there, but they said that was too high. So, in order to meet the guidelines for them and kind of follow the state, we decided to add the software, intangible software, external at $100,000 or more.
Okay. I guess we're all good with that, right?
And this will be out, right?
Yep. We'll have to sit on it for 30 days.
And next is DJEAC.
All right. So, we got a lot of feedback from the elementary schools saying that they felt like the redheaded stepchild compared to the high schools and middle schools, and they didn't have a $5,000 balance for their ability to use their credit cards. And they also made the comment that a lot of things had gone up in cost. So, we decided to take a look at that. And while we were doing that, we decided to go ahead and update the credit limit for the superintendent to take into account for inflation and stuff as well. So, what we're recommending is to remove the $2,500 and make all schools capable of $5,000 limit for their credit cards. And then we changed it from superintendent to cabinet level or designees, and the credit level for that to $15,000.
Okay. Any questions? All righty. Thank you. Okay, next week, we're going to review the policy BBFA Local School Councils.
Yes, please.
Yes.
The board knows, and this is just for the sake of the audience, we decided back in January, we were going to start going through our board policy a couple every month to see if any revisions need to be made. And so, the one, the two we're looking at tonight, first one is local school councils. You see how it is currently stated in policy? Are there any recommended changes or additions with it?
Do you think, do we need that last sentence? Even needed, a vacancy occurs in the position of principal when the position is to be filled with applications submitted to the district and not from a reassignment? Because we, I mean, we, we talked to local school council, whether it's a reassignment or not, right?
Right.
I mean, I don't know. I was just thinking if that would simplify. You can, we can look at it and see.
We could certainly remove that sentence if everybody's agreeable.
I mean, what do y'all think?
I would say just make sure you're reflecting what the law says, because the law may say it.
Oh, it may, it may come from that.
Yeah.
If it doesn't, I mean, it contradicts our practice.
Okay. We'll, we'll take a look at that and see.
Okay. And then the next one is BCBD. So, you see if you don't care to pull that up.
Okay, and again, this board meeting agendas, and I think there was going to be some conversation around this one.
Yeah, so, recommended just a couple minor changes to this, which we can clean up the verbiage. One is to add board chairperson and vice-chairperson in that first sentence so that there's a couple of options there in case one is not available. And then adding some language, which I can just read it, it says, and again, this is very draft, so it's not the final language. "Any member of the board may suggest agenda items for any official meeting of the board by submitting them to the superintendent and board chairperson and vice-chairperson prior to the meeting. These suggested items may be added to the agenda at the discretion of the chairperson or at the request of two board members." And then everything else would stay the same.
I'm good with that. I think we should say and/or about the chairperson and vice-chair, just and/or.
I think and/or is fine. The eight days, I think, I had a question as to that. And then I think Tom had explained a little bit of the Robert's Rule. So, I don't know if that's.
Yeah, there's two pieces to it. I mean, we have future agenda items on the agenda already for that purpose of notifying, you know, everybody about a future agenda topic that can be added to the agenda. And then Robert's Rules is what we follow to run our board meetings. So, that can change the agenda at every meeting on, on demand, basically, with the approval of, you know, a second and an approval of the board, a majority of the board. So, I think that's kind of irrelevant too. So, to me, I think leave things the way they are and don't have to put it in policy. But the future agenda items, item on the agenda can kind of serve as our notification of future items that can be considered by superintendent and chairs.
Yeah, my, my biggest thing here is I think we should. Yeah, my, my biggest thing here is I think we should clarify that if two board members are asking for something to be added, it shouldn't, it shouldn't become a debate amongst us. I mean, it should be our practice that we can add it. And that's not clear at this point.
Yeah, and I think the other thing is if we were to do this eight days prior, then that helps the staff and everybody get prepared, be prepared for the meeting. Where if we do it right, the agenda for the Robert's Rules right away, there might not be time for preparation.
Well, future agenda items, we would add it at one meeting and then have it at the next.
Yeah, but he's talking about changing the agenda.
What you're saying, this would be, you would add it before the meeting ever.
Eight days before.
Eight days before.
I mean, the, the eight days is, is almost an arbitrary number. We can, we can look at that. Maybe we just say prior to the meeting.
But your goal is to try and not have something where three board members at the time of the meeting say,
Say no.
we want to pull it, put it off, or we want to not have it or something.
I think to clarify that, two board members can add something to the agenda. And Robert's Rules comes into play during the meeting. So this is not really meant to be during the meeting. This is meant to be leading up to meetings, right?
And it should have a date. There should be enough days where everybody has time to be prepared. Where you don't say on Monday, oh, we want to talk about so-and-so on Tuesday, right?
And one of the things, even if you go back to our board norms, we don't, we don't want surprises out here, right? We don't want to, we don't want to on the fly be changing the agenda out here. Something that we typically don't do, right? I don't know that we've ever done it. So this kind of just sets a bit of a, some clarity to that, right? So we're, we have a mechanism to do this beforehand. That's all.
So the proposed changes would come up next week and then it was out there for 30 days, right?
Is that correct? Is that how we would work?
Well, no, you, you could, I mean, if you all are in agreement to make that change, we can say we're going to make that change now and then we'll just make it, you know, the revision. But it only needs to sit out there for 30 days.
Yes, that's what would happen.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. But you can still add agenda items at the meeting?
Yeah.
Yes. That'll still be on there for the next meeting.
That's in the moment you can add.
So in the moment, you can add agenda items?
And take agenda items away.
And take agenda items away. But to add an agenda item, you have to do it within eight days. You have to do eight days before.
If two board members want to add, I think was what Mr. Valdez is saying. What, if two board members want to add an agenda item, they need to give eight days' notice for that to happen.
Gotcha.
Sometimes things just happen last moment. For example, Matt might need something in facilities. Emergency just came up.
Right.
We need to add that to an agenda item for approval that night, which we can do. But if board members have an idea they want to discuss.
Got it.
Eight days in advance.
Okay.
And to Donald's point, that gives everybody a chance to kind of study that issue a little bit before that meeting.
And you're saying that this is the board protocol we've been following, so just put it in the policy.
I mean, again, the eight days is borrowed from, honestly, from another system's policy. But we can talk about the eight days. But the point is, you know, with ample time to allow staff to prepare.
I mean, if eight days is enough time, I don't know if that, is that enough time? Seems.
Typically, it would be. I can't imagine it wouldn't, yeah.
Okay.
I would say to clear, eight business days, to be clear about it. Just to be clear. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
You don't work on the weekends?
Yeah, I do. But I don't know.
Try not to. Okay. So we're good with that now?
Yeah. So you're going to add or, and/or?
And/or.
And then business, oh, no, you already have business days.
Okay. And now we have a legislative update.
Yes. All right. So it seems like passing education-related bills has become something of a sport here in the state of Georgia. So we've got something like a thousand bills that have tried to work their way through the General Assembly this session about education. Very fashionable these days.
It's amazing we need that many new bills, isn't it?
The amount of laws we already have. But anyways, I digress. So probably the biggest thing that, that has happened so far with a pretty high cer, high certainty is the 20, that amendment to the 24 budget that the governor announced last week, and then the priorities for the 25 budget. So I'm going to spend probably most of the time on that. I think that's what makes the most sense. The amended 24 budget, which was already signed into law, includes a $1,000 supplement for certified staff, bus driver, nutrition, and nurses. It has $103 million midterm adjustments or additional funds, $28 million added to the state charter supplement, $12 million added for dual enrollment, $9 million added for special needs vouchers, just shy of a million for AP STEM exams, and a half million dollars added for career development programs. So that was signed into law already.
Just to be clear, sorry to interrupt. The $1,000 supplement, that's the one we already see, received in January. I want to be clear, if we have employees listening and all, they're getting another one. You've already received it. Okay. Thank you.
Good. Thank you for saying that. For the 25 budget, which I, I think is still a pretty high certainty at this point, we are going to see the expected increase in insurance premiums from $1,195 to $1,445 per employee as of January 25. That jumps to $1,580 in January of '26, at least that much. And then it will jump to $1,760 in January of 2027. So that is an enormous increase that we need to be cognizant of because it is coming. And the proposed budget for '25 also includes $368 million for $2,500 raises for certified staff effective September 1st, 2024, $244 million for enrollment growth and TNE, $1,000 supplements for custodians, 4.1% raise for bus drivers, nurses, and school nutrition, and 6.3 million for two literary, literary coaches, literacy coaches per RISA, and $2,000 supplements for literacy support coordinators. So that's good. And then for teacher retention, or for teachers, it has $1 million computer science for professional development and a $750,000 mentorship program for teacher retention. And one thing that everybody will be happy about is that we are going to see an increase in transportation funding, which we've been asking for, for most school systems have been asking for. So 205 million in transportation, an updated bus count, which is kind of a big deal if you're in the transportation world, which should end up in them covering 40% of the operational cost of transportation, which is a big increase. I think we're like at 16%, I think I heard. Something like that, yeah. And then another $104 million now allocated as a budget line item for school security. It's the first time that there is a line item for school security, so that's, that's coming down the pipe. And there's a bunch of other details, but I'll jump into some of the bills. I can share all this information with you guys. And I'll move through these quickly as well because there's, there's a ton of them. Some of the big bills that are out there, SB 147, which is the Boundless Opportunities for Georgia Students Act by Senator Sean Still. Basically, it creates district-to-district transfer possibility and especially particularly for virtual school. So that seems to be making its way through and will likely pass. HB 579 is the Georgia Special Needs Scholarship Act by Representative Carter Barrett. And what it does is provide some additional provisions and funding for IEP programs and 504s. SB 154 is again making its way through the Senate and the House, which is the sale or distribution of materials harmful to minors. I think we are all very familiar with the subject. SB 233 is the voucher, the voucher bill. It's, there seems to be some, some rub there, so who knows how that'll end up. But it is, there is a big push to get it through the House this year. And then HB 1045 will require schools to give notice and receive consent prior to providing students with sexual orientation or gender identity instruction by Representative David Clark. And then this one is one to watch, SB 349 regarding the ad valorem taxation of property and setting of millage rates. Amongst other things, it would impose a 3% floating home set exemption for the entire state. So if that was to pass, I would imagine it would override the local legislation here, which is, sits at 4%. And then there's a couple of others that are tax-related in terms of the statewide home set exemption and ad valorem taxes, which I'll spare you. Questions?
What about the impact fees?
So impact fees made it out of the Senate with the required constitutional majority was nearly, nearly unanimous, and it's expected to pass in the House as well.
Just one comment on the governor's proposed budget around salaries and benefits. And it all, it's all good news for K-12. But the reality is, and we have to keep in mind, when the state increases salaries and benefits, that means our budget's going up with things we have no control over. And that will be a big increase in our budget on the, on the revenue side, but also on the expenditure side. You know, we get a lot of questions, you know, why'd your budget go up 7% or 8%? Well, sometimes it's gone up five of those percentage points because the state passed on salary increases or health insurance increases, and we have no choice.
Well, our past budget did that.
That's right. Exactly. So I just wanted to make sure we're clear on that. As Larry puts the final touches on the proposed budget, all these things we have to take in consideration, and there's no doubt, our budget's going to go up considerably because of these increases in salaries and benefits, which is good for our employees, but our citizens need to understand the why behind it.
But all in all, it's another very good year for a K-12 funding.
Well, and I just want to say thank you to Mike because he worked with our transportation department to help remedy a bill or refine a bill that would have been pretty disastrous. And then also Mike Evans and Lisa Newberry provided some feedback on some of the, the other bills. And so when, when the legislators ask us and, or if we don't force it on them, we've got good experts here, so we kind of try to tell them that, you know, they need to ask the people who are in the fields so we don't have unintended consequences. So thank you.
We're not shy about sharing our opinion.
No. So feel free to ask.
Any future agenda items?
I would like to add one for next week to give an update on the Homeless Youth Council. That's okay? Thank you.
Board of Education believes that the decision as to who will be the next superintendent of the Forsyth County school system is one of the most important decisions to be made by this board for the children and citizens of Forsyth County. This decision should carry forward the accomplishments of past years and our plans for the future. After carefully considering all of our options, the Board of Education believes that the person best qualified to lead the school system is presently employed and serving the school system as deputy superintendent. I move that over the next two weeks, the Board of Education pursue an attempt to reach an agreement with James Mitchell Young to serve as the next superintendent of the Forsyth County school system. Do I have a second?
So move a second.
Got a bunch of seconds. Second by Tom. Any discussion?
Say something.
Okay.
I just want to extend my gratitude to you, Dr. Bearden. When you came, I've heard from everyone that you really put an emphasis on the learner profile and that that was kind of the direction, the compass for the district. And everyone, you know, is well-versed in that who starts out here in Forsyth County schools. From that learner profile, many other profiles were developed. There was the aspiring leaders pro, I'll try to write it down, Leadership Development Program. So you had the aspiring leaders, which is now called the Lead Academy, aspiring principals, A to A. We have the Class A programs here. And our Joey Perkel, who is working here, he did a lot of work on that and handed that off to Mitch Young, who's done excellent work this past three years on that. And I think something that's great, and I know Wes has talked about it, when I came on, you know, we've got so many great experts here. Why don't we pull from within to create programs like Spark and other things instead of relying on outside entities? And I think building our bench is something that you've done really, really well. And so I appreciate you doing that with our principals and now our next superintendent. So I'm just really grateful for everyone involved. It's going to be great.
Yeah, I would just piggyback off that and say that, you know, we are very blessed as a school system, as a community, and very thankful for that opportunity to grow leadership within our organization. And I think that Mr. Young is a great example of that. And I am 100% committed to Mr. Young and hoping that he be successful over the next couple of years.
Yeah, and for me, the, having been in a part of the last two hires for superintendent, it was a arduous process searching for that right person. But when that right person came along, it was very evident to those in the room at the time that that was the right person for that time. During this process, it was very evident, we've come to a different place in this county and this system where we have created leaders that can serve in this capacity. And that's an attribute to yourself and other leaders that have come with us along this journey. And it's very impressive to see how we have enough capacity in here to do this, make this motion that we've made today.
Well, congratulations. We forgot to say that. Just a couple of things on process. We received many hundreds of bits of feedback from the public, which we, we went through the best we could. We met with dozens of principals with the cabinet and we took detailed feedback from everybody. The decision to stay internal with the process was, was a very deliberate one. One, one because of the fact that we have, this board and prior boards has developed that internal leadership capacity. But two, because our system is not broken and we're not trying to fix it. And we want, we want someone that, that's going to continue the good work, take it to that next level, but that is already ingrained in the culture and the, the style of the school system. Mitch is going to have huge shoes to fill. Dr. Bearden, you've done a phenomenal job as our superintendent, and I'm sure over these next months you'll help him. But Mitch, you have our full support, whatever you need, and congratulations.
And I just want to say, I think the first time I met you, you were a teacher in the South End. And I thought, well, he's a cute young thing. And now, and now he is, all these years later, a little bit of gray hair. But that's experience. I think you've learned a lot and I'm really, I'm excited for you and I think 100% behind you and I think you're going to do a great job. So anybody else, anything? All right. Do I have a motion to approve? Oh, no, we didn't vote.
We didn't vote.
We didn't vote.
Those in favor?
Oh, those in favor, sorry. Unanimous. Yeah. I really did see him 20 years ago. Okay. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Lindsay, second by Tom, all in favor? Unanimous.